So I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order on July twenty third, twenty twenty. And once again, we're coming to you through Zoom. And with that, we're gonna start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, everyone. We do have one amendment to today's agenda. Under section three, we're gonna add item B at Parks and Recreation Month. And with that, can I get a motion to group the amended agenda and consent agenda items?
Move to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda?
I second it, Cynthia.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, and we have an agenda. And first, under, uh, under agenda is, uh, public, uh, recognitions and presentations. And actually, um, I will go first with a Public Service Award for Paul Hens. Is, is Paul, are you on here? There you are. Well, right now, Paul, I'm, I'm holding up this, uh, distinguished Public Service Award. And, uh, let me give, give everyone a little opportunity to get to know Paul, who Paul, Paul is. Um, you know, we, we have the opportunity to recognize Paul for all his years, uh, years of service of being on the City of Lacey Planning Commission. We all know how much effort and time it takes to be on the planning commission, all those hours that they put in, and all the work that happens behind the scenes. And so it's nice, nice to be able to take the time to be able to recognize someone who's specially put in, um, two full year, uh, two full terms as you have, Paul. Um, Paul started on the serving on, on the planning commission on March of two thousand fourteen. So that's been six years ago. I think he was one of the first people that I've, I appointed to the planning commission, actually. Um, and so, uh, he was been actually instrumental as serving on the planning commission as the vice chair in two thousand seventeen. And then the chair of the commission for the last two years. Uh, during Paul's time on the commission, the commission reviewed and advised accounts on over thirty-five different plans, programs, and regulations, and policies. Just a few of his highlights include the two thousand sixteen envisioned Lacey Comprehensive Update Plan, the Lacey Housing, Housing Strategy, the Emergency Housing Facilities, Lacey Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, the twenty thirty Transportation Plan, the Regional Climate Action Plan, Critical Areas Ordinance, the pedestrian street crossing policy, the Woodland District Form-Based Codes, the Waste Wire and Comprehensive Plan, and of course, going back to retail marijuana regulations. So Paul has been instrumental in the service on the planning commission into our community. He has had the ability to review the information, listen to different perspectives, and solicit the community comment and facilitate discussions, uh, with, with respect, thoughtfulness, and of the community interest at heart. And for all that, we thank him and for his commitment, his volunteer work, his hard work in service to Lacey community in the city council. And, uh, Rick, Rick Walk couldn't be here tonight, but he really wanted me to pass along to you this, has deeper appreciations and working with you for the past six years, Paul. You've just been a, a great member of our planning commission, and we want to thank you so much. You, you have any, you want to say a few words?
Now, now we know where those hundred and twenty meetings went to.
Yes.
The, uh, things that happened. It was, really was a privilege to work with, uh, all of the planning commissioners, uh, during those six years. Uh, got to know people that I would have never been in touch with before. Uh, then, uh, the support that, uh, that was always felt from the council. Uh, thank you, council members, uh, for letting the commission, uh, research things and sometimes put things back in your lap, uh, so that you could decide some of the sticky things as well. And it was, I also really appreciated, uh, staff, uh, Rick Walk, uh, Ryan Andrews, uh, especially, uh, they were superb. And again, I was kind of surprised to hear all the things that we did, but, uh, that was, uh, a lot of stuff went on. And thank you, uh, council members and Mayor Ryder.
Yeah, so we'll be, uh, of course, now putting this, usually this would be at the council chambers, and I'd be able to come and shake your hand and, um, give this to you in person. But we'll be putting in the mail, it says, uh, Distinguished Public Service Award to Paul Hens for the Planning Commission from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all you've done for the city of Lacey. And, uh, don't be a stranger, I'm sure, year round.
Mayor, can I say something real quick? I think wants to say something too as well, because we both served with Paul and, uh, great, great guy. Appreciate you and, and everything you've, uh, sacrificed for the residents of Lacey. Um, I got to know you really well over, um, terms serving as, uh, kind of planning commissioners, and just really appreciate you and, and respect you a lot, Paul. Thank you so much.
And thank you.
Thank you. Well, I had the pleasure of serving with Paul for four years on the planning commission, and it was, it was a true joy. Um, Paul, you, you lent both your intelligence, but in easygoing manner and a thoughtful approach to issues. And I think, you know, we would still be there arguing some things if it were not for your steadying influence. So I just want you to know how much I appreciate you, and I'm gonna miss you in this role, but I, I hope you won't stay a stranger to the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Cox.
Thank you so much, and we'll, we'll see you around. Uh, feel free to continue to watch this council meeting if you'd like. We appreciate you, Paul. Uh, next up on our agenda is, um, the Park and Recreation Month, and our Jen is, you know, hopefully come on and talk about that. Hopefully.
There it is.
Good afternoon. And council members, members of the public, Jen Burbidge, Lacey Parks and Recreation Director, and I have a brief presentation for Parks and Recreation Month. I'm gonna share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Uh, since nineteen eighty-five, America has celebrated July as Parks and Recreation Month, a program of the National Recreation and Park Association, or NRPA. Uh, the goal is to raise awareness of the important services that park and recreation professionals provide to communities across the U.S. Parks and Recreation Month may not, um, look the same this year, but the public health crisis has shown how critical parks and recreation is, and a chance to tell the stories of the people who are caring for our public spaces and managing the many programs that enhance quality of life in Lacey. This month, Lacey is celebrating NRPA's twenty twenty theme, We Are Parks and Recreation. All month on the city's Facebook page, you may have seen us highlighting the passionate and important work of our park and recreation professionals who are providing services that are vital to a healthy community. Uh, the COVID nineteen public health crisis has shown the importance of parks and recreation throughout our nation. Parks, trails, and other open space facilities have often been the only remaining available recreation opportunity as the crisis has unfolded. Many communities saw a surge in usage at their parks. It's a little wonder that in, in our PA Park Poll survey, five in six U.S. adults said that exercising at their local park is essential to maintaining their mental and physical health. After this introduction, or we should say reintroduction, to their local parks, trails, and open spaces, many have started a new healthy habit and will continue that into the future. Uh, many parks over the past few months have included these amenities as part of their day-to-day life, uh, but this isn't unique to our current situation. In fact, eighty percent of people surveyed for a twenty nineteen engagement with parks report, and that's nationally noted that they visited their local parks and recreation facilities regularly. That's actually true for us here locally. On the last poll we did was in twenty seventeen and saw that eighty-four percent of Lacey residents, um, visited their parks, uh, locally or frequently, regularly. Every person deserves access to high-quality, well-maintained park and recreation options. Uh, with over twelve hundred acres of parkland and open space, miles of walking and biking trails, a premier regional athletic complex, access to three indoor public pools, and several community buildings, Lacey's residents and visitors enjoy one of the finest municipal park systems in the state. We offer a vast array of programs for all ages, abilities, and interests, including art, dance, sports, swimming, fitness, day camps, teen programming, trips and tours, and hiking. So whether you're looking to learn a new skill, introduce your child to dance or taekwondo, uh, play in a sport league, get in shape, or have your child learn to swim, Lacey Parks is the place to find these great programs. Uh, we also, as you know, celebrate with our community year-round with our cultural celebration. Uh, in a typical year, we would have our July third fireworks spectacular, uh, the light vehicle parade and tree lighting and, and other events as well. Um, so I wanted to touch briefly on a few of the many benefits of parks and recreation. Um, that's health and wellness, environment and conservation, economic factors, public safety, and equity. Oh, sorry, somehow I got. I missed one, sorry. The summer of twenty twenty currently has presented unique challenges in how we program. Uh, we have reimagined our day camps, swim lessons, and events to create safe and health, and healthy places for our community. So you can see in the upper right corner, the kids at day camp are physically distancing and wearing masks, um, our swim lessons. The parents are actually in the water with their kids, and the instructors are on the deck, which is a different format than what we're used to. Um, staff have been great pivoting in, in face of COVID. You can see in the upper left, there's virtual programming taking place, and then also in the lower left corner, this is the Thursday Family Entertainment Series, which we, we can no longer proceed with, um, due to the governor's update. But we did hold two out of six of those successfully. You see the circles on the lawn where the families can sit together within their household, and we had pre-registration for the event with physical distancing in place. And so that was a big success, success, uh, while we were able to do that. So back to the benefits. Um, regarding health and wellness, as America continues to face serious health issues, including rising rates of chronic disease and increased prevalence of sedentary lifestyles and poor nutrition habits, Parks and Recreation offers an affordable, accessible solution and can reduce impacts of chronic disease, especially in vulnerable populations like children, seniors, and people who are underserved. Um, regarding environment and conservation, local park and recreation agencies can provide environmental benefits by protecting open space, connecting people to nature, and engaging communities in conservation practices. In addition to helping connect people to nature, local parks are essential in creating environmental stewards who will advocate for and protect our most precious public resources, our land, water, trees, open spaces, and wildlife. Um, regarding the economy and also public safety, Parks and Recreation provides benefits, including job opportunities, again, in a typical year, uh, for teens and young adults, as well as, um, provides for increased property value. National studies show living in close proximity to a park will generally boost home prices, um, by eight to twenty percent, or value, should say. Also, communities can be more safe as a result of the wholesome atmosphere created by well-managed park and recreation services, uh, through healthy activities and programming. Uh, regarding equity, true to the very philosophy of public parks and recreation is the idea that all people, no matter the color of their skin, age, income, level, or ability, have access to programs, facilities, and places and spaces, uh, that can make their lives and communities great. Parks and Recreation truly builds community for all people. Uh, in closing, I just wanted to thank the Lacey, Lacey Parks and Recreation Team, um, also the Park Maintenance and Park Project Management Teams from the Lacey Public Works Department, uh, for all of their hard work and dedication, uh, to Parks and Recreation. I would also like to publicly thank the City of Lacey Board of Park Commissioners, and also to you, the Lacey City Council, for your support. Uh, most of all, I would like to express sincere appreciation to members of the community, uh, who use and support their public facilities, parks, and programs. Um, we're in the final stages of trademarking, trademarking our new slogan, which is Put Us on Your Playlist. So please do that, put us on your playlist, and know that we can't wait to play again more, more in person very soon. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jen. I really appreciate that, and, uh, we'll be doing a, a proclamation here, uh, actually soon, because, uh, next on the agenda is public comment on items on, on the agenda. Um, we haven't, we didn't receive anyone who wished to give a, a verbal public comment. Um, to do that, uh, you need to, um, sign up and pre-register by three o'clock, um, and there's a link to that. Uh, it's on, that you can get from our website. We did have one, uh, written public comment, and, and that will be a part of our, our public record, uh, going forward. But now we are on to proclamations, and this is gonna be the first time we've done a proclamation, uh, through Zoom. But, uh, as we, uh, normally have done this, we'll get started with our, our, our official proclamation, and we'll, and we'll start out with, uh, Councilmember Miller.
Whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and
Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically dis- disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all residents, and
Oops, Councilmember Cox, you're on mute.
I am, sorry about that. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses. And
Whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of wa- of the air we breathe, provide vegetation buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and
Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and
Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the Lacey City Council Parks, Park Board of Commissioners and community members recognize the significance of our communities, parks, and recreation programs.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim July twenty twenty as Lacey Parks and Recreation Month. Sign myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, today, July twenty-third, twenty twenty, and I think that went pretty well, considering it was our first time doing it on Zoom. So, thank you, everyone, and thank you, uh, Jen, for all you do for our parks. Um, you know, it's not as a, you know, a secret, we have one of the best park systems, uh, I believe, in Washington State, definitely the best park system in, in Thurston County. Um, and, uh, they just keep getting better with a, a great tractor like Jen, so, uh, thank you for, for all you do, and, um, we'll make sure this proclamation, uh, goes along with our other, other great proclamations we, we've given. So next up on our agenda is, um, a referral from the hearings examiner, and that will be Sarah.
Everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. I'm back with you again today, Mayor and Council, this month, to review another referral from the hearings examiner for a conditional use permit for construction of a water reservoir in the city of Lacey. Um, get my screen up here. Get my screen up here. Okay, so this month we have a hearings examiner's recommendation for construction of a one point two five million gallon water reservoir. And this is to augment storage and pressure in the city of Lacey three thirty seven water pressure zone. The need for this tank was identified in the two thousand thirteen City of Lacey Water Comprehensive Plan. Construction includes the reservoir, an access road, piping and a stormwater system improvements. This site is located at forty five oh four in Telco Loop, which is down in the Lacey Crossroads area, Lacey Corporate Center. It's in the Community Office zoning district to the north. It's bordered by the Point Residential Subdivision to the west by commercially developing property and east and south is also undeveloped commercial properties zoned community office. The site, as you see, is currently forested. The city purchased this property in two thousand eight for the purpose of a water storage facility and tower. The location was selected because of its ground elevation within the pressure zone. So that elevation coupled with the tower height of a hundred and thirty feet will help to ensure adequate water supply and to maintain and stabilize water pressures throughout the three thirty seven zone, which serves up to forty percent of the city's water utility customers. This project is a type three essential public facility. Public facilities are permitted in all zoning districts, subject to review through the quasi judicial review process. And prior to application supplemental, the Public Works Department, as the applicant, held a meeting at City Hall where several members of the surrounding community attended the meeting to gather information, ask questions, voice concerns. Those concerns range from construction noise, tower safety and most especially neighborhood compatibility.
Sarah, can I interrupt you there for a second? Mayor, can I maybe get Dave as an opinion? Because this is, this is in the Lacey Corporate Center. I I no longer serve on the board, but I was the vice president on the board for that association, the Business Association, and I do own property there. I don't know if there's any conflict or not, or if I should even be listening to this conversation once that came to my attention, but I figured it does anything.
Thanks, Councilmember. Dave, are you are you present?
I certainly am.
Okay. That's why you're
I think it would be appropriate for Councilmember Stedman to perhaps, I I haven't heard anything, as long as there's no direct effect on Councilmember Stedman by way of personal gain or in any information he has with regard to this application, there shouldn't be a conflict. But I'm available on my cell phone, which Councilmember Stedman has, if you'd like to call me right now to discuss that. But him listening in on this is not gonna be problematic at any rate, so.
I I think we should probably touch base after the council meeting or I call you whatever, but I just wanna make sure my parcel's only five parcels away from there to the south, so.
I, you know, I I don't think it's a conflict, but if you'd like to recuse yourself from this, go ahead and you can just mute this and and we can go on. I I don't, I think that's an abundance of caution. But if you feel comfortable recusing yourself from this, then so be it.
I'll do whatever Dave thinks is best.
Okay, well, um, let's let's just go forward and when it gets time to vote, we can once you mute yourself and and we'll go from there. Thanks, thanks for that. And let's let's go forward with the presentation.
Thank you. So on the screen now, I have the site layout for the facility. You see the reservoir is located in the southeastern portion of the site with a stormwater pond and a landscape buffer around the entirety of the site. Bring up another site plan, which shows the landscape, the draft landscape plan at this time. So the hearings examiner held a public hearing on June seventeenth. Because of the COVID nineteen situation, the hearing was held via Zoom. Notice of the hearing with information related to how to attend was sent to parties of record, as well as all adjacent property owners. At the hearing, the applicant, the consultant team provided testimony regarding the project. As did a property owner who was able to join via Zoom. They live adjacent to the tower, just to the north in the residential district. Or in the residential neighborhood. Tank construction safety standards, construction noise, aesthetic impacts and neighborhood construct or neighborhood compatibility with concerns focused mainly on tank safety, construction safety, fall safety, earthquake safety standards, as well as aesthetic impacts. And the big thing to note regarding aesthetic impacts, one of the major players in the aesthetic impacts related to the sighting of this facility is the health of the trees on the site due to the health of the of the trees, the declining health, as well as disease within the tree stand and within an adjacent buffer. There's a twenty five foot buffer located on the north side of the city property. Due to the health of the trees, the majority of trees in the property and offsite in that buffer are gonna have to be removed. And so what this does is it removes a natural screening technique that could help with some of the visual impacts related to this this use. Though the city will be required to replant trees as well as the screen buffer, a tank of the size is not one that's really gonna disappear into the landscape, especially in the short term. Though, long term, it is expected that the trees will grow to provide some screening. In the packet, the hearing packet, the applicant did provide some renderings and before and after renderings of the tower. They were a little stark. And to better illustrate the long term visual impacts, in the interim sense, the hearing, we were provided with a few additional renderings that show the anticipated growth of the tree plantings onsite. I'll bring up some of the, this is a rendering of what the tower will look like. Then we have some images of before and after from the neighborhood. So this was submitted with the hearing materials. And this was done after and you see what happens as the trees grow up over the long term. There's at least some screening of the tower stem, I guess, itself. Have a couple other views. This was before and after without any tree growth and this is an after. And again, that's gonna be several years down the road, but it will provide some visual screening in the long term. We do also have conditions in the staff report that address this buffer and the planting, that address sight lighting, that address paint colors. And those are all included in the hearings examiner's report. So based on the staff report, the exhibits and the testimony of the hearing, the hearings examiner has recommended approval of the project with conditions substantially as recommended by staff. So tonight, we're asking council to approve the project as recommended by the hearings examiner in his report dated July third of twenty twenty.
So Sarah, could you stop sharing? Yeah, perfect. First of all, can can I get a motion?
Yeah.
Do you want to give me a motion?
What's the name of this?
I move approval of the hearing examiner's recommendation.
Second.
Moving second. Now let's have some discussion. Councilmember Stedman.
With that abundance of caution, there's probably no reason for me to anyways, but I'm gonna recuse myself. And I think it's a great honor for Terry Cargill though, so he's a great guy at Public Works and loves the city more than anybody. So anyways, yeah, and I look forward to your guys' vote. Is there any other discussion?
Deputy Mayor.
So, I realized that the trees are going to grow up. Based on some of the views, though, there's one, the base does show in one area that where it, the trees don't seem to be going to be planted. And I wondered if there could be one, either some plantings in front of making sure they're all around or whether some of the the base could also be painted. And I guess I need to question that.
So, Deputy Mayor, this is a concern that I think we all have talked about before when it comes to water towers. And the the good thing that that, and I've double checked with this, this is a Lacey project. And so we're in control of this on our own project. I do, and we've had conversations on this council of how do we incorporate some some civic arts into things like this? And so it it'll be my recommendation, though, that we approve the hearings examiner as recommended and not put a conditional use on a certain type of art that we don't, we haven't approved yet, we're having discussed yet. But I I do think we will come back as this project goes forward and we will have a discussion of what we can do. I think we we want what's best for our community. And I think this is a perfect example of having some public art that that could, you know, fit in nicely with what we're trying to do. But making a a conditional use as a part of this record right now, I think would be very complicated. And so we, what we really need to do is move forward with the understanding that we know this is our own project and that we can come back and and address this going forward.
Well, my question is, will we be able to come back and add something afterwards? That's, that was my question. I wasn't saying that we needed to amend it. I just had that question.
We will and come back and address it.
Okay.
Rick Walk has assured me that that can happen.
Okay.
Is there any other question? Any other discussion? Councilmember Miller.
Have the residents had anything to say about this? Do they under, have they, have they had any comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Terry, you are, Sarah, do you want to comment on that?
So residents did, right, right prior to the COVID situation unfolding back in March, the Public Works Department held a public meeting at City Hall that was attended. The target audience was the residents of the neighborhood. And their concerns were regarding construction and tank overall safety and the aesthetic and visual impact to the neighborhood. I think they understood, generally understood the need for for the water tower. But they did, they definitely submitted comments and they came to the meeting. We had a few who attended the hearing and voiced their concerns. And we did try to address those as much as possible or to try and alleviate concerns. At the hearing, we discussed at length the construction standards for this type of facility. There's a general, there was a concern about what happens during an earthquake if the tank flood or if the tank falls over or what if there's flooding related to the tank. And we did have the engineer, the design engineer available to answer those questions and I think alleviate some of those concerns. A lot is gonna be really, we're really in regards to aesthetic impacts. And those are things that we've tried to address through screening, paint colors, so that it doesn't reflect in in the sunlight onto adjacent properties and sight lighting, things like that that we can try to address. But it is a large facility in the neighborhood.
Okay, so they they understand the need and they understand the greater good.
I think so. I think so.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then it's been moved and second to approve this conditional use permit for the City of Lacey Terry Cargill Water Reservoir. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one one person has sustained and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report and I just want to quick, give a quick shout out to Colonel Leo Wazinski, who is the former Colonel of and Commander of the of the one two Striker Brigade Combat Team, the Ghost Brigade, which is Lacy's Brigade. Councilmember Stedman and myself went to the change of command ceremony. And now Colonel Jared Bordwell is now the new commander of the one two Striker Brigade. And Leo has just been a great addition. And he is just, has been so great for the city of Lacey. He just sent me a quick message saying thanking myself and Councilmember Stedman for being there today and how much it meant to him and how it was great to get to know us and be a part of this community. He will certainly be missed. He, he you can see how much his soldiers loved him and how much he meant to the Ghost Brigade. So it's, it's a deep, you know, sadness that he is going, but I do look forward to getting to know Jared a little bit better. Jared was been a part of Ghost before, and so he's very familiar with the one two. And I think he's gonna fit right in and do a great job. And but Leo, thank you for your service. Thank you for already done. I know he's going back to the East Coast and he can now be closer to his Eagles that he loves so much. The Seahawks will continue to whip on over the years. So but other than that, that is my
If I, if I may, Mayor, if I may, I wanted to add that we also saw Sergeant Major Grant. And him and Leo are NCOs type officers, you know, they, they really, really care about their soldiers and their well being and all that. So, yeah, hate to see him go. Looking forward to, you know, a new command.
Thank you. And now the city managers report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We have a couple items before you. The first one is the COVID nineteen CARES Act Assistance Package. We've had several discussions about that. And Rick Walk is gonna discuss way forward on the parameters that council had set forth on getting reimbursement for the COVID nineteen CARES Act. So Rick should be coming on pretty soon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. And yes, as the city manager mentioned, we're here to talk the CARES Act Recovery Funds once again. And just as a quick reminder, I know we've talked about this quite a bit over the last couple of months, but the city of Lacey has qualified, has qualified for about a one point five million three hundred or excuse me, one million five hundred thirty eight thousand and one hundred dollars in recovery funds that we can use or spend for COVID related responses and be reimbursed through the Department of Commerce contract. And as the council recall, the previous decision was to go ahead and authorize the the reimbursement for about one point one million, just over one point one million in funds that are already distributed in the form of the the one million dollars in emergency grants to local Lacey businesses, seventy thousand to Thirst and Strong efforts, as well as fifty thousand United Way and ten thousand for homeless backpacks. So we're here tonight, at the last meeting, the council decided to take the remaining funds and distributed them fifty fifty to social services and economic development recovery efforts. And so tonight, we're here. George Smith and I are here to present a proposal of how we can distribute those funds in both those categories. So George will go through the economic proposal and for the two hundred and four thousand and fifty dollars funds for that project. And then I'll follow up his presentation with the social services element. And the goal tonight is to go over this, these recommendations and have council either authorize those recommendations or modify them in effect that we can go out and start making contracts with these service providers. So with that, I wanna turn it over to George to talk about the economic recovery effort funds. And then again, I'll follow up with and conclude the presentation with the social services funds.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm, I'm going to try to share a screen, so hopefully the technology doesn't disappoint us. Can everyone see that okay?
Yep.
Thank you. As Rick mentioned, we already talked about the, we already talked about the funding that the city received, which already been expended and then based upon your guidance at the June eighteen council work session. So I'm gonna talk about the economic recovery. Half of, half of the remaining funds, two hundred four thousand fifty dollars. Staff is recommending free expenditures for it. It would all be funded through Thirst and Strong, through the Thirst and Economic Development Council, the EDC. Recommend setting aside twenty thousand dollars for personal protective equipment. Seventy five thousand dollars for supplemental business reopening grants. And then the remainder, hundred nine thousand fifty dollars for childcare or financial assistance. So as far as the PPE is concerned, the data that you see in front of you is more than a week old. But based upon the percentage of of PPE requests that we've received, it appears that Lacey's share is going to be about twenty thousand dollars when all is said and done. The PPE is not an ongoing commitment where we will continue to fund PPE to businesses forever and ever. This is that initial supply of particularly enhanced sanitizer and face masks so the businesses can reopen safely to protect their, their customers, protect their employees, until they can make arrangements with the vendor. until they can make arrangements with the vendor for ongoing supply of PPE to meet their continuing need. Obviously also to, to, uh, meet the, the legal requirement as well. The business restart grants, I included with the staff report, uh, more detail on this. Uh, what the county did is they took their roughly one and a half million dollars and they're providing restart grants throughout the county. So it doesn't matter whether a business is located in the city of Olympia, whether it's located in, in, in Lacey's urban growth area or in the rural part of the county, um, all, all small businesses that meet the eligibility requirements would be eligible. Uh, the exception that impacts businesses in Lacey is because, uh, they want to do as much with this as they possibly can, they are going to exclude businesses that were recipients of the, uh, the, Lacey's emergency grants back in April and into May, at least in the first round. Uh, the grants have been available now for all of the day. Based upon the initial requests, my suspicion is there probably won't be enough left over to be able to fund any of the Lacey businesses that we receive, that receive the, the emergency grant. So staff recommendation is that we would do these as supplemental grants. So a business located in Lacey, it's one of the one hundred and ten brand businesses that received the, uh, emergency grant back in the spring, uh, would at least be able to get fifteen hundred dollars out of this from us. Uh, if, if they didn't, they weren't among those that were recipients, then theoretically they could get fifteen hundred from the county as well as up to fifteen hundred from the city. Very, very similar criteria to what we had in the emergency grants before. These are small businesses, uh, twenty-five or fewer, um, employees licensed, um, and very similar in terms of eligibility and uses.
Excuse me, George, you want questions now or when you're done?
Whichever way you prefer to do it.
Let, let's, um, let's wait, let's wait till, um, he's done because I have a bunch, I have some questions as well.
We'll, we'll have a natural transition spot between the social services and we can ask question on the economic piece and then go back to the social services and finish out the, the actions.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. So, um, if, if we, if, if we funded every request at fifteen hundred dollars, this would be enough to, to fund fifty requests. And again, as a, as a matter of comparison, we funded a hundred and ten businesses back in the spring. Fifteen hundred dollars does not go very far. The idea is this is something that would be available for businesses that the, the life preserver have kept them afloat, but they are at the point where they, they need to be able to restock. They need to be able to, to, to make, make some modifications in their building for social distancing, things like that. So it's a, at least a leg up to help them do that. And then the final piece is the childcare financial assistance. Affordable quality childcare has been a challenge long before COVID nineteen. It's a challenge here, it's a challenge in most places in the United States. Uh, COVID nineteen really has impacted the childcare business. Uh, the anecdotal information we've heard locally and what we're seeing nationally is probably at least twenty-five percent of the childcare providers probably will never reopen. Uh, we've heard numbers nationally in some places, much as, as forty percent or more. So, uh, the city of Olympia actually paid for a study that has just been completed. Uh, and the information from that study that was provided by the Childcare Action Council was used to formulate, uh, this, this plan. Uh, there's more detail than, than just what I'm showing in the slide. These would be licensed businesses, um, you can see the eligible expenses, the ineligible. And then it would be based upon the number of the licensed capacity. In other words, the number of slots for children, uh, that are available. Uh, there has been some money already through the state and through the federal government. There is an expectation that there will be more. This certainly isn't going to meet all of their needs, but again, this is a life preserver to keep them going, to help them be able to reopen. Uh, because we recognize that the provision of childcare is very much a potential, very weak link in the whole supply chain of our economy in that if, if working parents can't find a safe, portable place to watch their kids, then they're not going to be able to return to their jobs. So, um, just to give you an idea of what's involved in Lacey, we have one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three slots, uh, which is roughly a third of, of the county. Um, if every childcare provider reopened and applied, uh, based upon the hundred nine thousand fifty dollars, we would have enough to be able to fund roughly fifty-seven percent of, of, of the requests. Um, there's not enough to go around, there's not enough to meet all the need in childcare, there's not a need enough to meet all the need for businesses. Starting, um, there's probably not enough to meet all of the needs with PPE. But these are, uh, what we feel to be, and I don't want to say that this is the optimal mix that we're recommending. This is just the least bad mix that we think that we can provide that will, will, will help to, uh, solve the, the problem. I'll be very happy to answer any question.
Can you stop sharing your screen?
Oh, certainly. Thank you.
Councilmember Greenstein.
So I have a couple, um, you know, there are several business owners on our council and I, I don't know that anyone would disagree that fifteen hundred dollars is just, is not an impactful number. Um, I, I don't know that it makes sense truthfully to put any money there if that's the most we can give is fifteen hundred. And I would suggest that we either one of two things. We reimburse ourselves for the million dollars that we put out upfront without any expectation when we did that of reimbursement. So maybe we fund that with more money to make that a more significant grant. Or we don't fund that at all and we move that seventy-five thousand to the childcare and bring that fifty-seven percent up a lot closer to a hundred percent, um, that we could help. But those are just a couple of thoughts that I'm having because I, I just don't see the fifteen hundred impacting a business in any way that's meaningful.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenstein and Rick Walk. I already told you this was gonna, I told you we have business people on our council and I've already had this conversation with Rick when, when I first. When I first heard about this, I was like fifteen hundred dollars. I, this is obviously being, um, recognized by people who have not been in business because, uh, it's not almost, it's not worse my time as a business. And I know it's hard for people to understand that, but fifteen hundred dollars, uh, is, doesn't do anything, can't possibly get you anything or save your business or get you to the next, it, it, it's so, um, I don't know who would apply for fifteen hundred dollars to tell you the truth. And so, uh, it, I would, I absolutely agree a hundred percent, Lenny. Uh, I would rather either supplement that back up to a meaningful dollar amount, which would have to be over five thousand dollars in my mind. Um, or we move that money to someplace else. Um, and I'm, I, Lenny and I haven't talked, but I, I, I could see this coming because, um, when I first heard about this, I was like, there's no way. What, what is the county doing with fifteen hundred dollar grants? I mean, I just, this just blows my mind. Uh, Councilor Stedman?
Yeah, I didn't talk to Rick or you and Lenny about this, but it would have been a similar conversation I can imagine that you guys had with Rick. Um, yeah, it has to be something meaningful or like elevate the childcare thing, so it's.
Rick, do you have a suggestion? I mean, because I, I knew this was coming.
Well, yes, and, and we, um, um, we're, you know, we're prepared for this conversation. Of course, we got some, uh, discussions about, um, the, uh, the Thurston Strong Stand Up Grants and that fifteen hundred dollar value. And so we thought, well, okay, we'll put this as an option out there to supplement that, to that a hundred percent match. Just maybe put more, you know, value to it. But also too, that this funds could go to the daycare category and have more weight and go further in the daycare world, which is a definite need because part of that challenge of daycares is as people are able to go back to work and, and going in this fall, depending on what the schools do, there's going to be a need for people that have, um, places for their kids to go in a safe place. So they can go back to work. And, uh, so that would be our secondary suggestion is to shut, shift those funds over into the daycare, daycare.
Yeah, everything revolves around, uh, having adequate childcare in our community. If we want people to go back to work and have a regular schedule, they, they're going to need help doing it. And I know that the childcare industry right now is, is in, in a bad way. So I would also support whatever we can do to maybe, uh, bump up that resource a little bit and, uh, and make it meaningful. Uh, you're, and you've, points been made here that, you know, what's being offered is, is chump change. And, uh, you know, a lot of us that run businesses don't have time to fill out forms and, and waste it and, and just get a little stipend. Uh, that's, I mean, there are more productive things that people can be doing. So I would support that, I would support, uh, you know, finding a way to make that more meaningful so that more families can get back to work. Um, so that, that's just my passing thought.
Dr. Mayor?
Um, yes, I'm not a business owner, but I kept trying to think about what, uh, fifteen hundred would do when I couldn't come up with anything other than, you know, might work for a month or something, but for something. But, um, childcare, I agree, is important. My, my concern is trying to see, um, how that would be implemented. But, you know, we have time to figure that out maybe, so, um, and who would do it and what? Because a lot of the daycare centers, you're right, have closed. Um, but I think that is critical and it is a broader, um, use of the money because it helps both the people that are being employed as well as the employer. So I'm supportive of that.
Thank you, Councilor Cox. Uh, on you? On you, please, Councilor Cox.
I'm so sorry. Um, I'm leaning toward the daycare, uh, option for these funds, but I, I would like to ask, uh, Rick and George whether there has been recent effort to contact daycares so that we have something of a census of how many are, you know, could come back if they were helped back, um, how big the hole is. And it just would help, help me make the decision.
Uh, there, the Childcare Action Council, as George mentioned, has done a study. They've interviewed several daycares, they've got a list of all providers and their licensing capacity. And George can probably go in a little bit more detail on what that study report is.
Yes, thank you, Rick. The, um, the Childcare Actions, Action, uh, Council Study, uh, they, they interviewed, uh, seven childcare providers in Lacey. They kind of spread it around, so it was a couple of the, the small home-based, a couple of the medium-sized and a couple of the larger ones as well. And that really went into the formulation of the, the way that the grant is structured to be able to, uh, have as few strings as possible, uh, so that, that the providers had the, the funds they needed to do, the things they needed to do. There were a lot of things that they, that the childcare providers said they needed that are really beyond what we can do as a city. Um, they talked about the cost of providing health insurance for their employees. They, they talked about some of the regulatory burdens that they face and things like that that are, they're beyond the scope of what the city can address. But, but that was, that was figured into the development of, of the program.
Yeah, and that, and that study really did get a good job of taking, look at the three different various types of daycares, the centers, the, the home, in-home. And there are different needs, and so it really does provide us the ability to say, okay, what, what is that effectiveness of the funding and to what purposes? Um, and then also too, with value of this is long-term and helps us, you know, a database of daycare providers in our community. So as we slowly build out of this COVID pandemic and build out of this recession, that we start, uh, we have a good database for the ongoing efforts of our economic development activities to match adequate daycare to, to the workforce.
Dr. Mayor?
Um, quickly, could some of that money for daycare be used for, say, like, uh, making sure they have masks and, uh, as well as for the children and stuff? Yes? Okay.
There are very few restrictions on how the funds can be used. So i- it's anticipated that that's probably one of the ways that they'll use it. There may be other things they'll need to do for social distancing. They may need to actually add additional staff to be able to, to, to supervise the same number of children if they have to spread them out and put them into different, different rooms so that you don't have five kids in a room by themselves.
So the, the last thing I, I kind of want to talk about, uh, George, is the, is the twenty thousand for PPP, PPE. Um, again, I'm, I'm having a little bit of, of problem with, with this. It, it feels like it's a day late and a dollar short. Um, if, if you're a business owner, you're still in business right now, you figured this out long ago where you're out of business. And so to, to kind of come back now and say, oh, here, we can supply you with PPE is, it, it, it seems like, uh, I, I'd rather have that twenty thousand dollars go to childcare a- as well. I mean, I, I, I just can't believe there's, uh, at this stage of, of where we're at, that this is going to make any sort of difference for a business, um, you know? Throw them twenty thousand dollars for, for personal protective equipment. Uh, it, I mean, again, I'd rather see that, I think I'd rather see that money go to childcare. Uh, I don't know where the rest of the council is on that, but I just, I mean, if you haven't figured, if you're a business owner, you haven't figured this out by now, then I'm sorry, I'm sorry, right?
There, there, there still is a, um, demand for accessing, uh, personal protective equipment and, uh, the hand sanitizers and the, uh, the mask. And one of the, the spots that they're distributing that from is over on six, seven at the EDC's offices. And so they're, we're getting reports that there's been still repeated demand. And that's why we want to put this part in it. We recognize that there's been about twenty percent of the businesses accessing that program were Lacey businesses. So it's an outer, a way to help support that Lacey business effort.
Thurston EDC actually funded some money so that they could get the PPE on order and, and start getting it out even before the cities had had the opportunity to decide how, how to do it with the idea that, that this would be a need. And, and it's not as much of a need now as it was, it, it's not as urgent a need now as it was a, a few weeks ago. But there is still an ongoing need.
Okay, Councilor Stedman?
Thank you, Mayor. I will, I will say that when we were way back when, um, trying to even find the availability of PPE, um, uh, personal protective equipment, that it was at an inflated price because it just simply wasn't available unless you're willing to pay three times as much. So that, in that instance, this money I think would, um, help at least bring that down to a, um, a more nor- normal, uh, uh, cost. Uh, but, um, I think that regardless if you're, uh, uh, family with kids in the school district that, or, or preschool that need, um, these services or you're an empty nester or like, uh, a senior community where, um, you know, you support the schools even though you don't have any kids in school anymore, but you know, you went to school and that kind of thing. I think it's something that everybody can support because they see the value of, um, adults being able to go back to work. And. That is daycare.
I think, the thing is that, that is a different scenario, Mike. Um, that is, I, I'm sure there are people within our community that does not have access to PPE. And they, they should get access to it. Um, and it, but, you know, if, if you're a member of the Lacey community, can you go to the EDC and get a, a face mask? Or do you have to be a business owner?
It's a, go ahead, George.
No, go ahead, Rick.
Uh, it, it's businesses, it's, it's for them to, uh, be able to respond. It, it's, it's an application process where the businesses will, um, go online, fill out a form and they will be, uh, you know, invited to come down and pick up, uh, a supply. And part of this effort too is not knowing where things are going to be in two or three months and what happens with supplies as if we, uh, you know, as we know, we're facing rollback restrictions and those type of things that are also having that inventory, that if we do have a supply restriction, we still have the ability for businesses to access that equipment for those that are open or open on a limited basis.
Uh, so I think it depends what, on what type of businesses. So I've talked to my hairdresser, the one time I went, she had to change her mask every single client and clean, uh, use sanitizer every, between each one. Unlike somebody where they have a client, they could keep their mask on for the day and, and just wash it at the end of the day. That it's a different kind of thing. So depending on which business, they have a way more stricter rules than other businesses. So I could see them needing, um, uh, mask and sanitizer, um, a lot more than what, you know, a normal business would need. And, um, I know, uh, when I had my, um, house cleaner here, she said that she had to, she didn't have a problem because she had her own face mask and she could take it home and wash it. She only needed a few at a time, but so, uh, I think maybe. She only needed a few at a time. But so, uh, I think maybe um, it's it's important to have access to additional masks and sanitizer.
Councilor Green, Councilor Greenstein?
I was just going to say that in the beginning, there clearly was a shortage and the prices were quite high on a lot of this stuff because of the shortage. I know a couple of people in that business and um prices have come down. They're probably a third of what they were at the peak of the pricing on this. And the supply is plentiful. There's no shortage of supply of any of the P P E equipment anymore. But, you know, I mean, I it's the twenty thousand dollars is going to make a difference and help supply the businesses with it. Fine, but if not, I I'm with the mayor and the more we can dump into the childcare part of this, I think that's the biggest help we can do for the community right now. Because unless we can take care of the kids, people can't go back to work.
So can we can we maybe modify that? I mean, ten thousand dollars buys a heck of a lot more P P E right now than I than I did, you know, even a month ago. Uh, would would the EDC accept that that ten thousand dollars and then we put the rest towards childcare?
I've uh looked at George, but by initial reactions, I would think so. I mean, ultimately, there's two, there's there's a lot of, there's more need that we have money. And then how we leverage the those funds to be able to meet the most critical needs of the campuses is is ultimately the objective. So and George, you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I I agree.
So where's the council on that? What we what we what we did ten thousand to the EDC and for P P E? And the rest goes to, is everyone feeling good about that?
Yeah.
Councilor Stedman, yeah?
Yeah, uh, just put in things in the perspective, there's part shortages at Ford and the other companies that turn their business into uh producing P P E for the emergency basis. So um, that'll put in perspective of why there's um, you know, uh, a lot more supply. Um, so keep that in mind if you own vehicles too, because I just went to the shop and um, there's a lack of parts. So people should know about that.
Yeah, well, I think we're, I I think we have pretty much uh unanimous support that we will will give ten thousand dollars to the EDC for for P P E. And then uh the rest of these funds will go towards um childcare. So that is, uh, Councilmember Miller?
Uh, George, you said that the EDC uh fronted the money to get started with the P uh the P P E. Did you, I I didn't hear you say how much they had to pour in to get the the whole thing started.
Uh, they put in about sixty thousand dollars for their initial order, and they have done subsequent orders some since then, based upon funding that they received from Olympia and from Pump Water. But they had, they had funded the money before the cities had acted with the idea that that the CARES Act money was going to be coming out and that there was definitely a need early on.
So are they, are they really expecting this twenty thousand dollars coming from us then? And or?
I think they'd be happier with twenty than with ten. I think ten is probably adequate.
Okay. Counsel?
I mean, I preferred ten, but I also don't want to see us hurt the EDC if they laid out the money and need it to reimburse themselves. But if ten works, then I
I I think we have some time here. So I I let's 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 go with ten. Where, well, let's allocate the rest to to um childcare. There there's still things that gotta be worked out there. If if it comes back where we can't, haven't figured out, we can spend every one of those dollars through childcare, we'll come back and give some of that back to the EDC. Does that that seem fair? Okay, great. We got there. Rick, you're up.
Do you need a motion or anything?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We're at halftime right now. We're going So George
I need more than a motion when this is all over.
George, if you can share the screen again, because uh we got two, two or three slides left. And we're going to talk about the social services piece. And uh, again, this is going, this is not as we got programs to look at at funding or topics to fund, but not necessarily broken out on funding values for each. And I'll try and explain the reason why. And part of it is, I started talking with all the various service providers out there, where it's from homeless backpacks, uh, Community Action Council, United Way. Um, there's some food bank, all of them. There's, there's definitely more need out there than what funds are to go around. Um, and primarily, the the needs are in the world of rental assistance, utility payment assistance, the distribution of food, and that's a couple of different ways. One is the Thurston County uh Food Bank with COVID restrictions. Can't just have everybody come to one spot or two or three spots or creating satellite spots in Lacey and the other jurisdictions. But also you have the uh senior services programs that have the Meals on Wheels, which is a very robust program outside of this type of uh pandemic scenario. But now they don't have their show, the senior cer- center open. There's also a lot of seniors that are isolated in their homes without access to goods and services and support. And so there's a piece there that that is really related to the vulnerable um members of our community. And that also includes the homeless youth in their school district as the council uh allocated uh previously ten thousand dollars to homeless backpacks. And then, of course, there's a safe shelter with um housing and and then uh and partly the the shelter needs in the community. And um, before I get to how we're going to look at focusing our the our funds or recommending how we focus our funds, I want to talk about the United Way a little bit. Because knowing there's so many service providers out there, we could end up going into one of them, but then there's a lot of value of working through the United Way because the United Way um, can be very effective in allocating funding to direct service providers because they have a um, a handle on where all the community needs, tracking and identifying those needs. Where are all different funding sources coming from? Because there are different channels that can fund certain things, so they can use funds to fill gaps. And uh also, the United Way is is set up to be able to meet our reporting requirements for making sure we qualify for reimbursement from the Department of Commerce for the uh the the reimbursement funds. And with that, in turn, it eliminates the need for our direct service providers to then manage and track and document um, back to us in those contracts, but they can just be focused on delivering the service and the higher demands that they are now experiencing. Oh, next slide, please, George. The um, and so with that, and talking with uh um Chris at United Way and some other folks, trying to figure out how best to focus our funds with all those other needs out there. Um, and really looking at um, um, well, looking at rental assistance, utility bill assistance, there's a, there's some funding channels out there that are meeting that. There's additional state and federal funds that will be coming down that will look at rental assistance as well as eviction protection. Uh, Thurston County Commissioners have allocated about five hundred thousand dollars county-wide to help with rental assistance. So Chris thought those those were really being met. And um, for the time being, but with our funding, the two hundred four thousand and fifty dollars can be broken up and looking at senior support services, the Meals on Wheels program, uh Thurston County Food Bank, and the homeless backpacks. And I put homeless backpacks in there, um, mainly because we already uh met the request of ten thousand. But they also are being funded portionally by United Way because United Way has the ability to book purchasing and get more value for for that book purchasing. Um, and so also with these type of services, they are, they can um assure that those are all within Lacey needs. You know, you got the, the, you know, the stay-at-home program for seniors that's being operated uh across the county. But been focused, there's a lot of focus in City of Lacey, the Meals on Wheels program, Thurston Food Bank, been setting up Lacey Satellite Campus. And again, like I mentioned, homeless backpacks. Uh, next slide, George. So one of the things um in looking at the funding for the social services, again, looking at that two hundred four thousand, instead of breaking down a value amount for each one of those items, my suggestion is that we enter into a contract with United Way to say, these are the areas we want to focus those funds to, that um you need to figure out where those critical needs are and meet those those requests and distribute those funds. And then report back how you spend those funds and so that we can document that, report back to council how how those funds were expended. Otherwise, if we try to fund each one, it creates a little more challenge of trying to make sure we're getting the right mix to meet those uh service provider needs. So with that, um, we definitely will entertain any questions the council may have on the social services element. And then uh look at how we uh uh finish out tonight with a direction for the uh both the social service and economic recovery funding.
Hey, can you uh stop sharing screen? Perfect. You want to have any questions, uh Deputy Mayor?
I have just a quick question because you put senior services comma, and then the second bullet was meals on wheels. And so um, how are you defining the first one, senior services, as opposed to meals on wheels?
Okay, um, I apologize for the commas. Those are edits. I didn't catch the cleanup. But the uh senior support services is really looking at the that support program for those seniors who are isolated in their homes that don't have the ability to go to the senior center or have be able to go to the store. So they're having programs where they are they're increasing the volume of Meals on Wheels, bring them food, but also get um going shopping for them, getting their basic needs met, those type of things in the community. And uh you may see around the community about, do you know a senior in need? And the whole idea is to try to identify those isolated uh elderly that don't have the ability to just go out and get those those things. Meals on Wheels program, since the COVID hit, that's the same program that we're very well aware of. It's been ongoing for many, many years, a great value to the community. Its demand has increased, of course, and so it's it's primarily focusing on that program itself.
Okay, so so um, it's doing way more than just meals on wheels for the seniors. They're they're shopping, they're making sure that they don't feel isolated.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Councilor Greenstein?
So fully support the those four areas. I think that's the right place to put our money. My only question is, would we get more bang for the buck giving money directly to those four organizations? How much is United Way taking off the top?
I haven't had um uh specific uh discussions with uh Chris and United Way about that. But that is something that we want to put into that contract and scope of work, that there be a limit of of what that admin fee is. I know in the past, there's been a conversation about ten percent. I don't have anything concrete at this point.
Yeah, I'd really like to know that before voting on it, to be perfectly honest, only because, you know, it's two hundred and four thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, but it's nowhere near enough to meet the need, obviously. And I'd like to see as much of that two hundred and four actually go to helping people and as little as possible go to administration. And nothing against United Way, but they have typically, when compared to a lot of other charitable organizations, their their uh their structure puts a lot more money into um managing United Way instead of directly going to the end user.
And I do agree with that, and it it's a challenge, it's balancing, they have the mechanism to be able to re- report and document. If we go directly to service provider, then they're having to spend time doing that versus the other demands. So if if I was able to work at a percentage of 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 admin costs of not to exceed, would ten percent be a number that you wanted to see?
Yeah, I would definitely not want it to be higher than that.
Is there any other, any other questions? I'm I I I'm right there with you, um, Councilor Greenstein on, you know, United Way. I I know they have lowered that, but I also know how how difficult it can be to to track all this stuff that's necessarily for the funds. And so you're trying to sometimes ask an organization to do something they um and all volunteer an organization that doesn't have the ability to do that. Um, and so
Understood.
Yeah, and so I I I get why going with United Way. As long as you can keep that uh number down, um, I think it makes sense um to go with them. A- anyone else? So
Councilor Stedman has a question.
I just wanted to point out that um, the United Way is logistical geniuses, professionals, and n- next to nobody's as good at logistics as them, maybe the United States Military or, you know, Amazon or something like that. But remember not too long ago, the Squali flood, hundred percent of those funds went to that and and no administrative costs whatsoever. They they're big enough and they have the the financial backing to where the big machine doesn't have to wait to go into operation and wait for government to catch up and and help them. They just need to know that these monies are coming down the stream um to help. So they they don't go out of business too, because even though you're nonprofit, it doesn't mean you can't go out of business. So um, I'm all for it. Like I said, they're logistical geniuses, um, the best in the business, and they they've already done a ton. We just don't realize it for the most part.
Uh, Councilor Cox?
I'm wondering if it would be possible to have a United Way report back to us maybe in three months or whatever seems to be a reasonable period of time so that we can literally see how that money was used and do any course correction that might be necessary. Although I don't expect that it would be.
Yes, um, and we would um expect to get report as they spend money out, modify of that and document it. Reports like we did with the small business grant just well, a couple of months ago, where we gave updates of on the weekly based on that case. As we get updates, we can make sure the council informed and then wrap up with maybe a presentation by United Way.
Sounds good. So so um, Rick, what what kind of motion are you looking for here then?
Well, um, I think we pretty much um um figured out the economic recovery. And that's um for economic recovery, that'd be uh ten thousand towards uh personal protective equipment program and a hundred and ninety-four thousand and fifty dollars towards childcare assistance. With the potential opportunity to revisit that, if depend on how the funding goes, they'll go back and put additional funds into the P P E if it's warranted. And we come back to council to give you a briefing of that. And then on social services, um, I don't know, I'm not quite sure if the council's ready to take action on that tonight. There could be a couple of scenarios how you could. Um, we could go back and I can come back and, you know, tell you what we've discussed with United Way in terms of admin costs. Or you could say, we can go forward if we can achieve an admin cost of a certain, not to exceed a certain percentage and give us the authority then to go get there. If we can't do that, come back and report back to council.
That that's
I'll take a shot. I'll take a shot at a motion that covers all of that.
Go for it.
So I I would move that ten thousand dollars go to the P P E. The additional money on the, on the business side, I forget the exact figure, go to childcare services. And that the social service money, the two hundred and four thousand plus, go to the United Way with administrative fees not to exceed ten percent.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
What, one last point I wanted to make that I'd um, before we take any action was purchasing power was mentioned. Um, so I went to Wintco and and um Costco several times with my truck um, to pick up stuff that United Way purchased for homeless backpacks. And so if the if homeless backpacks was to purchase that stuff by themselves, they wouldn't have got it at the near um discount that uh, United Way would. So that's just another reason. If United Way wasn't in existence, that would have wasted a lot of money in and of itself. So is these little things that that are big things in the big scheme of things, it's important to remember them.
Yeah. Mr. City Manager, you're raising your hand.
Can I offer maybe a more straightforward approach? Maybe to split the social service into one motion and then do the economic development in another motion. It's pretty clear, the cleanest way is for the social service that I think everyone's agreed that the two hundred and four thousand fifty dollars is acceptable with council with a caveat that there's a ten percent overhead limitation and can't exceed that. That could be one motion. And then you can go into the economic Okay.
That that's fine. There's already, there's already a motion on the floor. Um, what
Let me make a
We're still going through a discussion. Explain, Mr. City Manager, we've captured all that in one motion. Why why would we break it into two?
Uh, because there's at least two, if not three, moving parts. If we come back and find out that we can't do the ten percent, then we need to come back and modify that one. I'm just trying to put those in sort of nice silos so we get clear direction and actually be able to execute those.
So who's the maker of the motion? Will you have a friendly amendment to break this into two motions?
Sure, happily. We'll break it into two motions as as uh stated by the city manager.
Second. We got the second on that. Okay, those are broken up into two motions.
And can I just clarify the economic development one? So the economic development one would be, I think everyone's in agreement that the one hundred eighty-four thousand fifty dollars goes to childcare. That's an agreement. There's also ten thousand dollars to go to P P E. And there's a question mark on the remaining ten thousand, and that would be um put aside until we have more information on the childcare investment and then the invet or the and feedback from EDC about is ten thousand adequate.
I see what you did there. Um, yep.
I accept that friendly amendment.
You accept that friendly amendment as well?
Absolutely.
I can that one well.
And there's a second on that as well? Okay, so this is, this is a unorthodox motion for two for two, for two, for two different things. Let's, let's go back to the um, the first motion is um on economic recovery. Um, we we, there's been a motion and a second on that. So any more discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Do you oppose? That motion carries. Now, there's a second motion on the social services, and this one's pretty big. Um, I'll going the two hundred four thousand fifty going to uh United Way. Um all going to 204,050 going to uh United Way, Thompson County with a caveat that their overhead not exceed 10%. Is there any more discussion on that? Seeing then all in fear of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Right, that's good. Mr. City Manager, everyone happy?
You're great job.
You're great.
Thank you, Senator. Very happy. That's what you need to ask. We did that right.
He gave us seven buses. A good job.
So now we're on to the uh next uh agenda item, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so Steve Kirkman is going to uh provide background. We have an interlocal agreement or an interagency agreement before you with Department of Enterprise Services. This relates to the renovation of Lacey Veterans Services Hub, and Steve Kirkman should be joining us shortly.
Yeah, we see ya.
Hey, okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the city's interagency agreement with the Washington Department of Enterprise Services. To provide project management and construction services relating to the Veterans Hub renovation project. That said, because a significant portion of this project is energy related, we've been granted approval by DES to amend our existing energy services. Um agreement with them, and that's what we recommend doing. You'll recall back in December of night 2019, we came before council under the same contract with an amendment. To perform design and engineering services. Those services are now uh almost complete. We have a few loose ends to finish up. And staff is recommending we mobilize construction to take advantage of the not today, not so much, but the upcoming dry construction weather. Um a lot of the work is gonna um involve roofing and windows and that type of thing. So we want to make sure we get that. Done before the rainy season. Specifically, the scope will include replacement of the building's roof siding, windows and insulation. Uh replacement of all the HVAC systems, installation of energy efficient lighting throughout the building, installation of energy efficient plumbing fixtures throughout the building. And of various ADA improvements. And you'll recall the city received a $2 million grant from this Washington State Capitol Budget Process. About nine or 10 months ago, I think now. So that will be a significant portion of this uh project budget. As well as the Department of Veterans Affairs of Federal VA is uh uh. Contributing about $530,000 for TI work um associated in their own um suite. We uh so as you can see from the staff report, the total is two. Let me get my glasses on. So I say it properly is 2,489,200 dollars. We um most of you are familiar with Robinson Company. We use them frequently to do independent uh construction and engineering estimates. So we hired Robinson independently of this process, and they did an independent estimate, and they actually came out at 2,725 dollar or 725,131 dollars. So you can see we're actually below the engineers' estimates. So we are happy with that. And we uh spent last weekend moving the facility directly across the street. Um it's in the old Community Action Council building that. If you know where that is, it's about 40 feet away. A lot of reasons for that. It made moving pretty easy, and it also will make it easy for clients that show up at the existing facility. Um we have signs, directional signs there that just leads them across the street. So finding the new location will be easy for them. Uh we anticipate uh construction will probably wrapping up right around the end of the year. And once punch list and move back is done, we should be in the middle of January, third week of January, operating in. The new environment, and we're really excited about it. It's been a great facility. We really appreciate especially the college working with us. We had a really uh a great arrangement over there and uh but the building is, you know. Almost 40 years old and things things need uh um some upgrades and and work, you know, when they get about that age. So we're happy with this and uh. And recommend you approve the city manager's uh ability to uh approve or sign the contract.
I would make a motion to authorize city manager to sign amendment number two, the interlocal agreement amendment number K6450 to. Proceed construction on the Veteran Service Hub renovation project. And number two, a move to authorize the city manager to sign the proposed inter-agency agreement funding approval form. With Washington Department of Enterprise Services to facilitate the proposed construction phases of the project.
Who got the second there? We'll give it to.
That was me.
Uh discussion. Uh Steve, Steve, uh how are you how are you paying for the 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 rents right now or at CAC building?
We have um some funds um that we have set aside um in anticipation of this. So. We we have some operating funds and some some accounts that are um. Flexible with spending, and we haven't had to utilize those for other costs um throughout the year. Um so we'll we'll be fine with that. It's obviously it's more than what we were paying at the school, but we're we're uh in good shape.
Okay, we haven't. I just hadn't heard about that. You know, first we heard that there's going to be some portables that are going to come in. That happened. We just had a conversation with council yesterday and talked about the veteran services hub, and. I just found out that we moved over the CAC building, which I I did, I hadn't known until um I got the information.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we uh we had intended to uh put portable sort of out in that parking lot area. And um we're a little surprised by the cost for that, and um so we're saving a significant amount of money by just renting. Existing office space.
Great. Now we'll go to discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Um so were you able to um get all the providers into the CAC building or how does that work?
Yes, yes and no. So with COVID, it's a different world. So we have been open and operating throughout the COVID uh uh event. With the proper precautions like we're practicing here at City Hall. We actually um were fortunate to get a grant recently for several computer uh stations, and so. We had always intended, once the project was done, to um expand our telehealth and uh you know Zoom consultation. So we just sort of started that a little bit early. So. A lot of our providers are um um clients can come into the existing facility and uh the provide or the providing service will actually zoom in or telehealth in depending on what. Kind of appointment is. So it's 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 impacted our numbers slightly, but quite frankly. If you look at them without knowing about COVID, you're not going to suspect that anything um has really happened. It's it's actually been really good to see that it stayed up.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still open five days a week there, eight to eight to four. So um Councilor Stedman.
It so Steve mentioned the cost savings of moving over there, but and I love the fact that uh you mentioned the Community Action Council, because I'm the treasurer of the board there. And it's awesome, but it's also the home of the Lacey South Sound Chamber.
That's right. Next door neighbors.
Hopefully more people know or as many people know just as uh much that they're located in that building as well. So. And it was a great uh uh platform to throw a shout out to our chamber.
Anything else? Anyone else? Well, for the if you if you know who's listening to this who wants to know about our Lacey Veteran Services Hub, like I just mentioned, we did a conversations with council. It's on our. Our Facebook page. It's also on our YouTube page and um come to uh go check that out and you'll hear about the how the. Lacey Veteran Services Hub came to be and all the great services that's being provided. And it's really um is become a national model. Uh what we're doing here in Lacey, we have just also received. Uh a uh municipal excellence award from Association of Washington Cities. Uh based on the for the Lacey Veteran Services Hub. So uh and we couldn't have done any of this without Steve Kirkman. I mean, uh you've been there from the get-go. You've figured out how to make it happen, you know, and uh thank you so much, Steve, for everything you've done. I. I mean, it's there. It should later should be called the Steve Kirkman Lacey Veteran Services Hub. Um I'm I'm dead serious on that. We couldn't have done. Could not do.
Wouldn't exist without him.
Appreciate that, but not necessary.
Is there any other? Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All in fear of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Thank you so much for your due. Uh Mr. City Manager.
So just one quick item, uh given the fact that uh we do not have a council meeting next Thursday, we have some significant construction that's occurring in the community. One is College and 22nd. The other is the interchange at Exit 111, the divergent diming interchange. And I asked Scott just to do a quick slide because there's going to be a complete closure of the interchange at Exit 111 starting Friday. Uh July 31st. So I'll hand it over to our Public Works Director, Scott Egger. Mr. Egger.
Egger. Egger.
I should have unmuted myself before I share.
I was gonna say he's on the.
I'm I'm still learning. All right. Uh as as uh City Manager said, just uh two major closures a week from now that I want to make you aware of. The first is the uh Exit 111 is going to be a full closure. So all on-ramps, off-ramps, and the bridge deck itself will be closed. Uh the screen I'm sharing right now is a cut from one of the an informational email that the DOT sends out on their listserv. Um they have over 9,000 people signed up for these, so they have pretty extensive communication. But the uh closure there will be from 9:00 PM Friday, July 31st. Through uh 5:00 AM Monday morning, August 3rd. There've been a lot of questions about will people know what to do? So I highlighted this little section out of the DOT's uh information. So it says, keep in mind, there is nothing new for you to learn when traveling these types of interchanges, which are operating in most states. So bullet one, stop at a red traffic signal. Bullet two, go on green. Bullet three, follow the signs and lines. So. Pretty simple. And honestly, the first time I drove drove through one of these, I didn't even know I was in one till I was through it. Uh the work that will be done, I mean, currently, the big concrete barriers that run along the center of the bridge. Uh that will protect the pedestrians, those have been poured and completed. Um when they're through, when they reopen this uh uh on August 3rd, they'll have all their signing and striping in place. Uh areas, if you can see up here that are shown in red, are actually the raised. Uh stamped concrete pedestrian islands, though those will not be completed yet at that time. But any place, uh you know, items like that are missing, there'll be cones, candles and barrels in place to help direct people through. So um you know, and if anybody um wants information on what it looks like to drive through. Uh a DDI, the DOT has several great videos. All you have to do is Google, you know, Washington DOT Exit 111. And and you'll find it. It's there. Uh the next uh. Well. The next big closure is going to be the College Street closure. So we're going to close it next Friday, July 31st. From 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then the following Monday, August 3rd through Thursday, August 6th. Uh the map you see here on the left uh shows the closure along along College Street. Uh the the areas in yellow, local access will be able to get through, but the yellows and red areas in red, only the people who physically live along there will have access. Uh the green area shows the detour, which is Mullen Road to Ruddle. Uh you know, which adds very little time to a commute. In terms of public outreach there, uh the map on the right shows the area that we sent mailings out to. So uh those mailings went out today. Those residents should have those tomorrow. Um the map's kind of close short, but uh.
Yes, I got mine today, just for the record. So it's good.
Uh the uh so yeah, it's it's basically. Uh everybody within the perimeter from Chambers Lake on the west, Ruddle Road on the east. And from Mullen 37th on the south up to about Pacific Avenue on the north. Those are the mailings that are going out. Uh Steve's group and Donna are helping us with all the social media outreach. Uh we've already put out uh information to all the emergency providers. Um and uh yeah, so we're sending email out, social media and mailing. So uh with that said, does anybody have any questions on those closures? Yes. Deputy Mayor.
Only because I live on 21st, which basically is just one street over in back of the school. Um would it be preferable to not even, because I could go to 22nd onto the. Street to get to my, but because I live there, um would it still be preferable to go Ruddle and tell everyone that? To go Riddled if I'm going to 21st?
Absolutely. Like I say, along College, the area that within the uh within the actual project limits. The only people who will be provided access there will be the people who physically live on College Street. So.
On College, okay.
College Street, yes. So uh everyone else is will be asked to to detour, and during that time. Uh all the work we're doing is all the finished paving. So when we're done on August 6th, all the paving will be complete. All the the signs and markers will be complete. Uh we'll still have some landscaping and cleanup to do. Uh the pedestrian beacons are in, but we'll have to make those operational. Uh but uh yeah, it'll it'll be in final form as far as roadway goes.
I'm amazed at being able to turn right on um. College from 22nd is just great right now, but of course. You can't go the other way. Yeah.
It'll get even better.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stedman?
Thanks, Scott. I I wanted to mention you could go down 37th to Wiggins with in if you wanted to go to the west, but. Um you know, in anticipation of the Exit 111 closing, we just did the roundabout at um.
Orion.
And Meridian, yeah. Me and the mayor drove through that purposely today on the way to change of command, and it is really awesome, huh, Andy?
Yeah, it looks that looks great. That's gonna help before it looks it's looked so much better. When when is that rest of that construction um gonna happen on on Meridian? When that when's that gonna be?
Need to be painted, right?
Uh actually, the construction on Meridian is going on right now. Uh they're currently working. Uh when I drove through there yesterday, day before, they're working on the shoulder going northbound. So they're working on shoulder work. I think y'all know that we're going to widen it by the pavement by about four feet. To provide better shoulders for cyclists and pedestrians. Uh so yeah, and then uh I think next week uh they'll should be getting into grinding and followed up by paving. So they're they're. Current they're actively working on it right now.
So I'll have uh Councilor Kuntel.
So uh going back to College Street again, you you said by August 3rd, it should be fully functional?
No, August 6th.
Or 6th, I'm sorry. It's August 6th, okay. So the roundabout will be fully functional. Uh it's just basically some minor cleanup and everything else is going to be good to go.
Cleanup landscaping, right, right. So this. Uh like I said, the the first full closure will be next Friday, week from Friday. So next week, they're going to be finish up. Finishing up boring stamped concrete in the islands and and that kind of work. So. After Thursday, the 6th, uh the remaining work will be landscaping, cleanup, punchless work. Uh probably raising the valves that are in the street.
Great. Looking forward to seeing that. Uh I I live on 14th, and so. You know, golf club has been my best friend for quite some time.
Hey, Scott.
Yes.
Will that result in any any uh any more closures, the the cleanup?
Uh there when they're doing the cleanup and landscaping and raising the valves, there will be lane closures. But uh I I you know, the delays that have been occurring recently, I think are are going away. So at a at a minimum, there should be at least one full lane in each each direction after that.
All right. And so and then on um on Marvin Road uh on August 3rd. So people are going to go to work and 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 be. Fully using the the divergent diamond and in a way that the way in the way that it's designed to be used, or is it still going to be kind of the mixed use that it is?
Yeah, you know, the sweet thing is they'll probably be through it before the coffee kicks in. They won't even know they drove through it. But yes, it will be in the new alignment. Uh there there will still be some features they need to add, but it will be in the new diverging diamond alignment.
So only thing I have to say about the the divergent diamond interchange, you know, by now is, oh my goodness, what it took for us to get here. I mean, it I remember uh you know, way early on, it was uh you know, the city manager, myself going on the hill. Trying to get funding for this interchange, and we we did it for several several years. And finally, a new transportation package comes out, and guess what? Lacey is one of the first projects on the list, and we're so happy. And then we get a phone call and it said the meeting that says, oh, we want you to come in with, talk to the the the. Uh Department of Transportation Secretary wants to come talk to us. We're like, okay. So we come in, it's like, oh, no, we're up for practical design. We're going to take a look at your project again. And we walked out that meeting going, what the heck does this mean? And then they come back and goes, oh, you know, all this time you've been planning this full interchange, you know what? We're not going to do that anymore. We're going to do this divergent diamond interchange. And we're like, boom, what? You know, great, you know, when we were, I remember we were sort of. When we were, I remember we were sort of a little skeptical early on and then, but the more we learned about it and how much it saved the state of Washington, by the way, by by doing it this way. And then once again, Lacey here is going to be a first in in the state, you know, we're the first uh in the state to have a two lane roundabout. We're going to the first divergent diamond interchange, so this is very Lacey at the end of the day. And it took a, it took a long time to get here and it's it's great to see that, you know, we're almost through it. We're going to actually have this thing open and uh hopefully it'll be operating uh very efficiently and and moving traffic the way it's expected to. So uh, thank you, Scott, for all of your patience, everything you've done along the way, you know, we had a lot of questions early on. We want to make sure that um after all the hard work we put in, and we're going to actually get something we, that's going to serve the our community for a long time going forward, and I think we're finally there. So thanks to, thanks to all.
Well, thanks for all the work you all did to get the funding, so so we could go out and do this. But yeah, once COVID's over and uh DDI is open, it's going to be a big DDI party. Thank you.
Back to you, City Manager.
Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, well, then we'll go on to our standing general committees. Uh, first up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Mayor, I'm the chair of that, but I was not at the meeting. I was out of town. Not sure if Carolyn or Ed had a report on that. I was, I wasn't there.
Uh, Carolyn chaired that committee.
Well, then you're on the hot seat, Carolyn. This, you have to remember on mute yourself.
It's not a big one, I can give it. It looks like it's just the.
Let Carolyn do it.
Well, I I need you to bear with me to get back to the agenda because I was all ready to give the Transportation Committee's report. So just one second, please.
I I think I could give it, Mayor. It was only one item agenda, even though I wasn't there, it was our Sister City Association. So uh Hannah Anders uh presented this uh Lacey Mint Sister Association Two Thousand Nineteen Annual Report twenty uh twenty twenty work plan and budget to the committee. And that that was pretty much it.
That was it.
Yeah, we we approved their budget, I think it was three thousand dollars. Is that correct?
It was, yeah. Well, which in from recent years is a lot cheaper than, you know, you remember the challenges of uh insurance and youth and traveling different countries. Um, so that's welcoming news for sure.
Okay, then we'll go on to the Transportation Committee, and now hopefully you're set for that.
I'm uh unmuted and ready to roll here. Uh, I want to thank Scott Egger for his report here because our Transportation Committee meeting consisted of road updates on all these construction projects. Um, obviously, the the two biggies have been taken care of. Uh, we learned a little bit of more about the Mullen Road improvements with the roundabout, roadway, sidewalk, utility work. Uh, that's estimated to be completed next summer. And let's see. I guess the other thing I'll add is about the Twenty Twenty Overlay Program, and that's, you heard a little bit about the Northeast. Um, Meridian and Orion Roundabout. Uh, they're covering from Thirty First to Forty Sixth on Meridian. And then there's a citywide project to do patching around manholes to make them more stable and make it smoother for drivers. There are several other projects in the works that we got a a thing on, but I'll keep it short.
Great, thank you. And I'll go on to Boards Commission.
And real quick, because I'm on that committee too, I just wanted to point out to the general public that, you know, these projects, when they come under budget and and finished on time or before time, uh um, all these fact, many factors, right, and grant writers are another one, are reasons why we're so successful at getting grants. All these good things um come back and reward the citizens, uh you know, with with getting these projects done when other municipalities don't get the head, the nod, so I just wanted to.
I agree, we have a great transportation system for sure and great staff. Now we'll go on to Boards' commissions and committee reports. I'm at first, but I don't have a report, so I'm going to go straight to Deputy Mayor.
Um, I don't have a a report either, we did that last time.
Councilmember Cox. Oh, you, you're on mute.
That's three, uh, my bad. Regional Housing Council met on July sixteenth. Uh, we adopted the draft in our local agreement between the cities of Olympia, Tomwater, Lacey, and Thurston County. Um, that agreement will be coming before us before too long for review and presumably adoption. Uh, the agreement spells out, you know, who's at the table, uh the financial obligations that we commit to. Leadership, uh collaborative decision making, and other issues as well such as recommending regional policy. Um, we also discussed a possible new location east of downtown Olympia that could provide additional shelter beds, uh space for a cold cold weather, hazardous weather, um space and uh room for social services. So this is, this is in the talking stages still, but it is encouraged, there are encouraging signs that this actually could happen, so I'm excited about that. Um, Health and Human Services Council met on July thirteenth. Uh, we reviewed um revenue projections for the different funds that come in through the state and federal government on how these are going to be affected by the, I guess we just have to say we're we're in a full out recession at this point. Uh, we did agree on about two million dollars in grant awards to various social service agencies um that primarily apply, provide housing assistance to keep people in homes if they have a home. And if they don't have a home, to provide them shelter. Uh, the grants also cover things like critical repairs to housing in order to make it habitable. I mean, you know, physically safe to live in, um, emergency needs and youth um street outreach. We set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for cold and hazardous weather contracts because the situation has changed with the closure of the Community Care Center and the Salvation Army now has formally put everybody on notice that they will no longer take part in that program. So other organizations are working to fill the gap, and we're going to review uh what's there in August and try to get those contracts done before the weather turns on us. And Inter-City Transit had um a pretty simple beating on the sixteenth of July. Most of it was devoted to um an in-depth presentation on the new uh Administration and Operations Building, as well as the um Vehicle Servicing Center that they're doing as part of a redeveloping of the Patterson Street site. And construction on that should begin sometime in the fall. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein.
I have no report at this time.
Great. Councilmember Miller.
Uh, yeah, the Thurston Reg- TRPC uh did meet on July tenth, and it appears as though, you know, transportation and roadways are, you know, the the talk of Thurston County because that's, that's what hijacked our meeting uh and seemed to be the the focus of conversation, uh in this case, uh the Log Cabin Road uh project. Uh, comments were taken on that, uh and uh, no real decisions have real, really been made as of yet, but uh as they do, you know, uh I I'll I'll keep you apprised, uh the the uh commentary has been varied and uh there are a lot of opinions out there. And uh trying to get people to understand the history of how this came to be uh seems to be some, something of a challenge. Uh, and and understanding the agreements that were put in place decades ago. Uh, and and uh it's, it's an ongoing conversation. Uh, is is all I can say about that at this point, because there's not really anything definitive that I can bring to the table as of yet. Uh, Thurston Thrives has not had a meeting, in fact, their August meeting has been canceled. Uh, as I looked at my schedule, uh I've already reported on the Lodging Tax and Advisory Committee uh in in the last, on my last report. Uh, however, we will be having another uh meeting before the end of this month. Uh, Thurston County Coalition, which is my last potential report, hasn't had a meeting since I last gave a report on uh on that committee, so that is my report.
Thank you. Yes, that uh TRPC meeting was definitely lively and um it had to go with uh the Transportation Policy Board's recommendation uh for the six-year tip, which is normally just a uh easy, no big deal, uh always gets passed, and this time around, um uh those, there's a lot of people around the L B A Woods who are very passionate about not seeing the Log Cabin Road extension go through, and they wanted TRPC to take it off the six-year tip, which was is something pretty unprecedented. Uh, you know, each jurisdiction on this uh decides what their their six-year transportation, you know, plan looks like. Um, and even though the Olympia doesn't plan on on building a road in the next six years, they they keep it on on the tip just in case that there is, you know, and and this is for the the general public. Uh, the reason why we have, most of the reason why we have a six-year tip is because it's a ability to get funding for it. Um, you have to have this, your project has to be on your six-year tip in order to go out and um and and to uh try to get uh grants. If it's not on the six-year tip, you can't get grants, and so that's why a lot of times you see things on the six-year tip. Um, so in this circumstance, there were uh very passionate members of the community or we're trying to sort of get uh the Thurston Regional Plan Council to take it off their six-year tip, which would mean it'd go off Olympia's six-year tip, which means they wouldn't be available for grants. And um, but I I think the the TRPC did the right thing and did go forward and kept it on their six-year tip. And uh the city of Olympia needs to figure out uh what they're going to do going forward, so. Uh, that was a very interesting conversation. Usually, I'm the chair of the Transportation Policy Board, usually I'm not involved in those meetings, but I was asked to come um be a part of that meeting to give the Transportation Policy Board side of our recommendation of why we would go forward with that recommendation. That being said, uh Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I told you last council meeting that I was going to report on both Community Action Council and um Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Um, both were, uh one was postponed and one was canceled entirely, so Community Action Council, they're both be supposed to be held yesterday. Um, Community Action Council canceled, and there's no August meeting, so they're not supposed to meet till September. So I got a meeting, I'm setting up with John, the director, and it just makes sure that there's no big changes with the finances anyways. Being I'm the treasurer, and then Solid Waste Advisory Commission just moved theirs to the beginning of August. So um they're still um doing RFP and all that stuff's moving forward, and they expect it to be the end of the calendar year, beginning of uh two thousand twenty-one for the RFP process. But other than that, I don't really have, I don't have a report until we actually have a meeting, so. Um, uh, next meeting, I'll say that again for the third time.
Okay, Councilmember Cumpel.
I I also have no report.
Do you have anything for the good of the order, Mr. City Manager?
Have a wonderful night.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go A's.
I I would like to add, uh Councilmember Stedman and I are both members on the board for uh Gold Star Families Memorial. And uh we had a really good, exciting meeting uh with the founders and uh we have some pretty cool stuff coming up. Uh, one of the things is we're going to be able to see a, what do you call it, a virtual view of what the memorial will actually look like when it's placed in the Lacey Civic Plaza.
Ed, did you get that email from Chad? Because I actually have it, I can send it to you and the City Manager, um but it's really cool, it's a three D um model of and of course, we don't have exact placement in Civic Park or, you know, where it's going to go, but they can move it anywhere, and so all the heavy lifting's done. You can actually see of it virtually and what it would look like with all the background and the three sixty view, everything, you name it.
You should send that, send that around so we can take a look.
So we have a, we have a mock-up uh of the memorial, and then we have a smaller miniature version. And uh so working on fundraising, uh really want to see this come to Lacey, it's going to be a great day when we see that come to fruition.
And Ed's not going to say it, but he built the big mock-up, and he did a wonderful job. And we have a Gold Star um mother or wife um on our uh Cambergood. She's on our board, and her and her kids painted it to to make it look exactly or as close as possible as a real, um the real actual copyrighted uh monument, and it's awesome.
We had a couple of uh Gold Star Moms that participated in that, yeah. So it's going to be exciting.
Question for the two of you, how much money do you need to raise?
Between sixty and a hundred thousand.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. We we haven't tried to contract with anybody yet, so we don't have a specific bid amount, but that's that's the going rate across the country, somewhere between that with uh Councilmember Stedman.
And that's what I was getting at, we're we're going to take this mock-up um and take it to places like uh businesses that are, will welcome us like Target or Costco or Home Depot and uh put a booth out there and and if people feel as generous to enough to contribute to it, um, that's our plan, so.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you, thank you both so much for that. I mean, that would be amazing, amazing addition to to that plaza. And so I I really look forward to um help help, trying to help contribute to that. Please keep us informed along the way on what we can do. And so I'm sure you can be able to hit the the Rotary Clubs and all the service clubs and that stuff as well, so.
Yeah, I'm going to send that email, forward it to everybody here and City Managers, so everybody has, can look at it. So it's exciting for sure.
Well, we made it through another meeting. Once again, right, success. And so until until next time, it's good, it is good to see the City Manager back, although he is self-isolating a little bit, so he's not not at City Hall, but he's looking pretty good. So until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.